All right, let's go back and resume the meeting. We're still talking about the management of the basketball sports complex. Steve, appreciate your comments. Guys that are here from the Rec Commission and Jeff, if you all want to get up and say anything, you've already offered some very insightful comments and observations about how it's done in other places. And I certainly appreciate your input, not only tonight, but going forward. We're gonna rely heavily upon all of you to help guide us and hopefully get this thing started with a bang on March fourteenth and keep it going even after leading season end. So, if you all have anything else you wanna add?
I would hear you Jay. If you would just-
I'm starting to do the deals and so forth. More than Steve's point about, I don't know where we are in the budget and I know we got in a bind and we had to make some cuts in the recreation department. But I have to really focus that we need to get, whether it's a recreation director back, an athletic director back, whatever I see, as you've heard from Steve, we need up in the city. And the recreation commission is fully supportive of it. We gotta replace that. So, we gotta get one. I would love to have two, but our competitors can't be two cities got to get that person back. Because the other piece that I wanted to bring up, and I know Michael and I are gonna be on Friday, that I wanted to bring up. Is there any, can anyone tell me? I mean, we were told the other night at the commission meeting, that there's some, there was some grant money for use for other projects for the city that basically expired because we didn't have anybody looking into it till applied for it. And I know Darcy used to be the one that did all of that. And I understand what we had to do. But I can't, from the recreation, which I know we talk about money and grants, but we can't, as a city, just like I know we have, we have several budgets that got kicked to the side, you know, based on money. One of them was Andrew Johnson, we put on hold, which grant money that got lost.
Well, we made repairs though to Andrew Johnson.
But not to what we needed. It's still not where it needs to be.
I'm not aware, I mean, we may not have applied for some grant money, but I'm not aware of any grants.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to find out, I'm trying to find out, does anybody even look at it anymore?
Yes. I don't know if they got a grant on it or leave it regularly, I'm sure she, I don't know. She's looking at it regularly.
Yeah. I don't, I have to go back and find the minutes in the meeting that was gonna, that was gonna, grant that was gonna expire. The best part, the best of the knowledge that we got told is it didn't get applied for.
Well, that may, that may have lost the truth. I mean, there's-
I'm just trying to do-
I didn't get applied or it didn't expire, we just didn't apply.
We didn't apply for it, correct. You know, but the deadline to apply expired, so we weren't able to. I'm just trying to figure out-
Okay, so there's a lot of grants that you have to match the money, and you realize we don't have any money to match it with.
True. And I can't answer that question, I guess. The part that I wanted to bring up is I think-
Let me tell you, we don't have any money to match it with.
The point, I guess, that I wanted to bring up, most importantly, to go along with Steve's point, is I think there needs to be that person, not only to help us direct this, but also to keep an eye on the prize. But I don't feel, you know, I know we don't have any money to match at this given time, but hopefully if we can start generating more money and funds, maybe we will, as we did out of where we are, and I know we're steadily progressing there.
Well, that's not necessarily true. I mean, we have the pocket of recreation money, and we have money to match it up. So, I mean, between, between the balance of the bond money and motel, hotel tax money, there's still some money there. It just depends on how much and-
Well, I just know there's other projects, and I know like we purchased the land next to NCC Park for a new basketball court that needs to be, that was on the list. I mean, there was a part, there was a new basketball court listed for Reggie Weedy in the project for this in the very beginning. I mean, all those came out, and I understand why. But I mean, there's other projects that we need to do, and I just don't want, I'm just trying to make sure that we have, I'm trying to get another person to keep an eye on the prize. I, you know, I know we've gone through a lot of changes, and it's not anyone's fault. But I just need, you know, I wanted to express tonight that I do, you know, to Steve's point to help us direct this new facility that we're gonna have, but also other recreations, just to play some of the conversations you have had with the city. I mean, there's a lot of maintenance work that needs to be done on the pavilion at the soccer complex. It needs to, it needs a total repaint. The raft, the beams across there are all rusted, they're rusted, the paint's been off. It looks bad. There's a lot of maintenance projects that we need, I know that's not grant money, that's the money that Scott just referred to that we have, but I think that we don't have anybody looking at that.
Is all this in your recreation commission?
Not this far, no, no, no. This is something-
That's probably the appropriate place for that.
Sure, but I mean, I just, I wanted to bring it up that there's different, we just, there's other pieces of the city that we need to try, hopefully, this person could help us focus on.
I heard that this meeting, number one, is job description salary for a recreation development director, so that's-
I mean, I wanted to bring it up, because I think, I wanted to reiterate to Steve's point that I feel like it's something that, I know it, there was a time when we could do without it. I know we, you know, he just, time, we need to bring it back.
I completely agree. I completely agree. I think everyone here does agree with you. At the end of the day, those are decisions that ultimately fall within the wheelhouse of the city manager. And I'm assuming at some point he will come to us with a proposal, if it's hiring additional employees, or creating positions even. I mean, I'm assuming that's coming sooner rather than later, but that's, that's the person I think we would look to, to come up with a comprehensive proposal that, you know, we need to do this with the complex. And by the way, we've got to have one, two, however many people, additional, whether it's new employees, whether it's reassigning people, whatever it is, that's, that's his job.
I know. And I know he's, from what I've known, I have a beat, looking forward to working with him as well throughout all this process. And I know he's had his plate full of getting, getting started, you know, a month into the job, so a lot of it on his plate. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, Steve. Just one thing, and you've got touched on earlier, and there may already be wheels in motion for this to be dealt with, but looking at how nice that facility is, and you know, Steve just kinda reaffirmed, it's not as nice, it's gonna be nice, just given that the scheduled date for its completion are right around the corner. The maintenance, it doesn't need to go one day without the right amount of maintenance. It's not something, based on historical, that city employees are necessarily gonna be able to maintain, because it's a different level of playing surfaces and different type of grass. And, you know, so I don't know if the city intends to bid it out or amend that. You've got a current contract, right?
Well, no.
So, I don't know if it's something, I don't know if it's something that can be written as a change to a current contract, you know, for the immediate need or if it has to be bid out. But if you're gonna have to bid it out or issue a new bid, you know, to do that in support when it opens, you know, you gotta act now, basically, because it takes two, three months to advertise and bid it out, award it and get a contract in place. So, I think Steve will reiterate that not just anybody needs to be messing with those fields once they get, they get open and start to get played on.
And Jeff, since you're the city engineer, that's a, that's something-
I volunteer.
He's doing it, and I would hope that he wants, and continues to do it, because he's one of the best in business.
And Jeff, since none of us are engineers, and I, I mean, I don't even know what, where to start in terms of what to ask for, is when it comes to maintenance. You know, most of us think it's like a new car, you know, when you get it, boy, you turn it in and it goes, and it's running like a train, whereas I, I get it, things start breaking down the moment that you get the keys to the facility. But I don't know who the right person is. I really would kinda look to you for guidance to tell Michael, this is what you need to be looking for in terms of contractor that can, at least for the first year, can, can help the city, you know, maintain the place, whatever, whatever it is we need to have done to keep this thing operational and running smoothly.
I think we'll just take a modification of the contract. I mean, we're gonna be dropping off the softball fields and probably Louis Street and things and this, we'll take a modification of a contract, but I think, I mean-
That would some of the quickest way to-
Right. I mean, in my opinion, I think that's the way we should, should probably do. I mean, because he's already managing the grasses and managing, I don't know, lining the fields and things like that for a while.
That's part of their construction contract, that they put in for any extended maintenance of what they put in, like beyond their completion date. I mean, I know we've done that with the contractors responsible for like, you know, two, three months of water, you know, even with the grass.
We're mowing the grass until it's turned over to the city.
Okay. The day it's turned over, these three of all, I mean, other than the warranty.
And, and we're, we're spraying when it comes time to spray, we're, we're treating it. But that's, that's all in the mowing contract, we're not, that's what-
That sod came in looking good, it looks good down, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna walk away from it.
Don't you have a contract anyway? For the fields and the-
For all the others, yes.
Yeah. I mean, it would make sense to just expand your contract, certainly. But Jeff, I guess, again, I'm probably showing my ignorance here, and on Scott's point about admitting a contract potentially, I guess, with utility partners, I mean, I feel like we're getting handed the keys to a-
No, no, no.
Wait, wait, let me finish. I feel like we're getting handed the keys to a Ferrari. And so, you know, you might have somebody else that's doing maintenance work on this besides the normal, you know, infrastructure work that's doing. I guess what I'm trying to say is this something that we can use existing resources to handle, or do you believe that this is something that we need to look to somebody else to do?
That existing resource.
A what? For fields?
I'm, I'm talking about beyond the field, I mean, beyond the turf and the grass and all that. I don't have builders, lighting and-
The lighting's gonna be in the power company, right?
Should be.
That's probably the problem. That's probably the most complex system you got out there. So, if they're handling it, really the rest of it is just, you know, general grounds maintenance of soccer field, I mean, building maintenance. I wouldn't see anything overly complex like that that-
Okay.
But now, again, you know, I don't know how to, if that's on the utility partners, you know, they very well would put their hand out, because it's a new facility that didn't exist in their contract.
And I have no problem with the, with using potentially utility partners, that wasn't the point, I was just making sure there's nothing unique or special about this, and it's infrastructure that requires some expertise that we don't already have access to.
Like I said, the lighting, I think, the power company, if that's under their contract to install and dealing with the lights, and outside of that, again, the turf maintenance is a big thing, certainly.
Yes, all right.
Yeah, as far as drag and everything and all that, I think it's always been beautification that always gone out there into the garbage.
Oh.
That's not part of your-
Air to that, that's always one of the-
Well, I'd look at to get the bathrooms cleaned and so forth to add to your point, Stephen, that, you know, I'm assuming they did that in the past, someone did.
No, they, so that's my point, that's why we have, that's why we're here.
Because I mean, you could, I agree with you, Stephen, I mean, at some point, we had maybe to look at, because there will be, of course, trash, like I know from the last meeting, we talked about, which receptacle's gonna use, but we'll definitely need some kind of trash pickup. Because the question that I ask is like, if we're gonna have tournaments over the weekend, I don't know if utility, I'm just, because I don't know that. I don't know if utility partners works on weekends, are we really gonna need to look at maybe an outside vendor to help with some of this, the daily type maintenance? Because who's gonna come on Saturday night to empty the trash cans that are overflowing?
Well, it's not really Saturday night, but I'm worried about this Monday through Friday.
Why, I'm just going off baseball-
We're gonna need to dust the dosses out there.
I, you understand where I'm going, Stephen, like I just don't know, like, on a Saturday, who's gonna, you know, who's gonna empty the trash cans? Because I, because I mean, I don't know if it's-
The contract with the tournament guy, he better have it looking exactly like it was when he got there, or he was put it in the contract.
Or he loses his deposit.
Exactly.
But, but I mean, if that's, if that's the way the contract's written, that, I'm fine with that, but some of it is not written that way, the, you know, I know, like, even like, if it's sports bikes and so forth, if the sports bike people, their maintenance is where they pay their-
They're just indulging.
They, just like up at the, on County Farm Road, they use the road to make, because basically the county and city employees go get the road and make, they do it. So, I mean, it's on the ci, the city actually, the one that can go for it, it does.
Well, I think the other important part is like Steve's mentioned, and Jay and everybody else, you want the facility, you want people to come back. So, yeah, if they leave it the same way they found it, great, but if he leaves them like that Saturday night and dump them for the Sunday evening, and I walk up and I got trash cans falling out of the place on Sunday morning, I'm not gonna like it.
Retooning is gonna be a tragedy.
Needs to be done every day.
I think typically, in tournament standpoint, he pays, and the city would then say, we're gonna have a custodian out there, somebody to empty the trash cans, clean the bathrooms during the tournament, and it's this much an hour, and he pays that.
Just like when we lease a build from, like when we lease a football field at the football home, they have the guy that comes out there and he's responsible for whatever.
Well, you know, just can, can I go back to the old fields, you know, old baseball fields we had for years? How many of you saw one of those?
Yeah, I was like, you know.
When you go to the bathroom, when you went to throw something in the garbage can, everybody could throw very well at the baseball fields, because you went from me to that podium to the garbage can, and you threw well to get it into the garbage, and you weren't walking by the garbage can. These new fields, they're twelve million dollar fields. You don't want to have to throw that well to make it to the garbage can. I'm gonna walk up to it and go like this. I want it to be nice and clean, and I want to be able to go to the bathroom. So, I'm not worried about the tournament guys. They're gonna keep it nice and clean, because that's a professional organization. I'm worried about us.
What?
Yeah, the Monday through Friday folks who are gonna be playing ball, and I'm in a hurry because it's time for me to get home and get my kids in bed, and I don't care about that garbage can. You know, that's what I'm worried about. It's my everyday life, I gotta get home.
During the season, it's probably the worst time, because you got team practice all week. On the weekends or, you know, game nights, you got vast amount of people to clean up afterward and pick up the garbage, but you don't, during practice times, it's just, uh, you know.
Still, I still wanna get home and get my kids in bed, and I don't really care about that hot dog not being, I mean, I, I just wanna get home.
All the reason to have somebody there, that's your job.
That's it. So, that's, that's my thing, we gotta have somebody who's cleaning up, and we gotta have somebody who's cleaning the bathrooms and picking up the trash and tend to do it. It's got to, it's got to remain a nice parent setting before.
No, no, it's like a beach park or, or somewhere, who does that now? Because that's having to be done already with the practice.
Is that part of the training?
Well, it's got to be done better than it's being the beach park. I'm, I'm just gonna say it on the, I'm sorry if that, if somebody's doing, it's gotta be done better.
I mean, you may, maybe that's the same group, I would love to.
Maybe, it's gotta be done better.
Doing all season, uh, nine, six days without no game, will that be a fence around that keeps some people coming on, playing fields?
I know from the conversation with the engineers on the project last week, I had that about a perimeter fencing. He said the fields will be able to be locked down, because I asked specifically more about on a tournament type day, to be able to collect the gate, and he said there's gonna be a way, so we-
So, the, the inside of the fence will be-
But I guess there's some ways to lock it down.
The fields will be able to be locked down.
Okay.
But you've still got a lot of perimeter outside of that, just from what I understand, it's not going to be- Yeah, they can control access, but those access points aren't secure. You can get in, but each field, I think, is individually locked. Is the way I kind of understood. That's how, that's how, I mean, drawings, there's no fence going around it. Because we actually talked about that as an addition, if we had the money, we'd do nice and put a fence all the way around.
But you can control entry into the complex.
With what we have currently, yes.
Well, so, complex into the field portion of the complex, you know, there's a lot of green space that I consider part of the complex, that you're not gonna be able to control people getting in and out of that.
Which can't get into the games.
No, not the games, correct.
What you're saying is hypothetically, some people can take some lawn chairs and go sit in the outfield.
Well, what I'm saying is on Sunday evening, the boys from down the road can go down there and kick dirt around and hit balls up against the backstop, like mat stop, by putting the green spaces and do nothing.
Right.
That's right.
Big deal.
Well, and, and I just told-
Well, that would not be secure enough by large scale. And that's, that's what I mean by the complex, Stephen, I mean.
I personally like to basically see fences, like you always move forward.
They need to be logged in.
Yeah.
We put too much money into the country log in.
Well, I think, I think we do have the space to be able to do it, and then like you said, I think, I know we've talked about different funds that we could generate to be able to do that, but I think at this point, you know, we gotta, gotta go with what we got, and then we can kinda see where, because I think too, and I hope everyone agrees, I don't want to make it look like a prison either. I don't want to put some-
It's not, it's not, it's not like going down-
I mean, I, I don't, I don't want the old chain link equipment looked, I mean, I, if we're gonna spend money on a fence, we're gonna go ahead and spend some decent money on a fence, so that things that look, I don't want-
One thing, make sure it's not pop off.
Exactly. I just don't, I mean, like, that's the only thing that I will say, I mean, we spent twelve million dollars, I don't want it to look like a twelve million dollar prison, but my boss set up some six foot high chain link hemp over there. And there was nothing wrong with that, the way we had the pass, but I think we've moved beyond that at this point. But I think we can get some fencing that can be locked down.
I assume, I think it's probably just a brick.
Okay, based on the, based on the handout that we were all given, I think we've addressed the issue about baseball and softball leagues, and although we haven't gotten into the details of who's gonna be lining the fields, we've already talked about grass cutting maintenance, game versus tournament schedules, that's something we need to take care of as soon as possible, but putting a lot-
We really haven't discussed that.
Addressed what?
Because we talked about travel ball, but we haven't talked about baseball and softball.
Okay.
They're two different areas.
And, but we talked, I thought, earlier, and league is gonna get some priority, but I guess the question, are you still back at the question of sort of who's gonna be the overseer, for lack of a better term, sort of for the city to either, I don't wanna say supervise the leagues, but it's sort of supervising their use of the complex, and I don't know if that's where you're going with that?
So, um, we have, so, and I'm going back here, we, we used to have, and I assume we still do, have a contract with the baseball league and-
Facility use, there's facility use agreements that the league signed with the recreation department.
And I'm assuming that's still a hundred years old.
Correct.
And so, that probably needs to be-
No, it's not a hundred years old, it's been done in the last six, seven years, probably.
It doesn't-
I mean, they didn't sign one of them until about three or four years ago.
Correct, they used to-
It's a good point, we need to look at that, and maybe-
Well, it does need to be looked at, to Jennifer's point, because of the new facilities. Because if there is something that we want them to maintain, the, the leagues are able to use the fields, which is there, which should be able to be done, but at the same time, I wanna make sure that they wanna take responsibility and take care of them just as much as we brought in a tournament, and they have to be responsible for it. I'm not wanting to expect them to do maintenance and everything, but if they're gonna go out there and let kids trash it or tear up the backstops, I know we've talked about the new fencing that on the tier two field, that we don't need a climate on that, you know, I mean, if there's damages that, I mean, from the facility use agreement, it needs to be reviewed for the new, the new fields and anything else that we feel needs to be added.
So, to my point, the baseball fields, those cannot be run the way they used to be run. This is not the same complex that we used to have, so it just can't be the same.
Right, it's changed.
One of the concerns, besides if we, if they didn't have a concession stand money, was how are they gonna pay the umpires, how are they gonna, you know, all that kinda thing? So, that's why this is on the list. You know, if they didn't have that money, how are they gonna, so who's gonna pay the-
I think they pay the umpires, I haven't, I haven't.
That's my thought, they sent the umpires, no more?
Since when?
Last year, I think, this first year.
We didn't have, when we didn't have money.
So, they, they go with them.
They have that twenty percent.
We did, we did, we did.
So, I think that'll be more.
Well, that's why I brought that up. If we're gonna, if we are actually going to give you concession, maybe we need to vote on that tonight, and we'll let Michael get started on this before, because we need to get that floating. And, and give them a little peace of mind and take that monkey off their back and let them, the lights a little bit, so they don't have to-
If we're gonna give them that money, then they have, they have to assume a lot of responsibility for that. I mean, we're, we're literally handing them, you know, whatever the number is, twenty percent, and whatever that generates, but I think we have every right to expect that you're going to be responsible for paying all these people, getting these fields lined, doing the things that normally they would, they should be doing without the responsibility of having to man a, a concession stand. I mean, I think that's fair.
We have booked a lot of fields.
I, I'm just, I'm, I'm throwing examples out there, I think that there are responsibilities. I'm, I'm not saying no to giving them twenty percent of the concessions, but I think we need to, in some agreement, like you said, let's have an agreement with them that, that memorializes exactly what your responsibilities are and what our expectations for these leagues are. Because if they don't step up and, and handle those responsibilities appropriately, then we may need to look at doing something different.
Well, I agree, but we need to, we need to decide what those responsibilities are, but are they, are they going to hire the umpires, or, you know, that, that's-
Right now, it's dollars and umpires, you know, I mean, because the kids, supposedly their registration's paying for their uniforms, and so that takes care of that.
And they have trophies and all the kinda things that they do every year, so we do need to decide all that. But we need to give them some peace of mind. Now, the other thing is, just like when you and Scott asked for, um, bank statements or-
Bank statements.
If, if we ask for that and we're giving them twenty percent, I hate to say this, but you know, we need to ask your mom and daddy for money.
Did you see that I was being said?
Yeah, we need to be-
Well, especially in our public record. I think, I think our agreement with the league says that they're supposed to provide with the trajectory of stuff.
So, that, that should be able to be produced very easily.
Should be able to.
Um, but, uh, so, contract between the leagues, who's gonna schedule their leagues, who's gonna run their scheduling? The parallel between the leagues and the travel ball league, the cleaning up, the trash pickup, if we're gonna do right in the maintenance of the fields into existing contract. One of the things that I remember, and I worked on, Goshay, Moss Point and Ocean Springs, and there's a new league now, so I don't, and I don't know anything about it, Cowrick and, it used to be Dixie Beach.
Not so new anymore, but-
Well, well, it's new to me, and I don't know if they allow the other cities to come in and play. But that, that increased the revenue, when they didn't allow those other cities to come in and play.
Correct, and I think, if I understand correctly with the Cowrick and, I don't know about softball as much, as long as those cities do not offer a baseball, a Cowrick and baseball for that age group, then they are eligible, because I know, I believe there was some kids from Goshay last year that were able to come play here because they didn't have that age group. I, I do feel like that's another conversation, you know, for all our sports leagues, because I think it's a great partnership between the cities to, you know, between Moss Point and Goshay especially, since those are the closest ones, to make sure that the children in those cities have an opportunity to play in our leagues. But I don't, that was, I think that's the stipulation on the Cowrick, then if Moss Point has that eight, a ten, let's just go ten, ten year old age group, then of course, those kids are supposed to stay in Moss Point and play with that, that group. But if they don't have a team, then they are eligible to cross the boundaries to come in to Passagoula and play. Or Goshay, we don't even have it, but I think we've been able to field every age group, so.
That was just another-
Yes.
Some answers, yes.
The answer's yes, they can, if there's not a, if there's not, if they don't have it available in their city. So, we can get, because I know that was the other, one of the other items that I know several people have brought up, is that the city had imposed that out of residence fee the city had imposed that, uh, out-of-residence fee as well, that I do feel like would be an item that would need to be, would, I would like to reconsider, I need to see if it's enforced anymore, but, 'cause I don't believe that should be enforced anymore. It should be encouraged and children play more sports if that's what they so choose. I can't help that Moss Point and Goshay can't offer it to them, but if we can, I don't feel like our parents should have to pay more, uh, just for their kids to come play here in Pasca Gula.
And we're gonna make that twenty-five dollars somewhere else.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think the parents already have to come to town, as it is, to bring them to practice here or so forth, and I don't think we just need an added, I just don't feel like it's an added expense that's, in my opinion, that's justified for, you know, in a recreational sport.
The, the, I remember when this, I, I was, um, vice president of soccer league the year that came on, and at first I was for it, because it, yeah, I felt like, well, it's fair, because the kids of Pasca Gula should pay less since their parents presumably are paying at war taxes. I mean, they're hopefully spending their money here and so forth. But when it came down to it, it was, I, I think, it was something extraordinary. We were charging, I think, ninety dollars for registration for soccer, and the city insisted on it being an added fifty dollars, which I thought was too high, but that, at the time, we didn't have a choice about it, we couldn't really fight it. I, I, I certainly agree, what's being done now is way too much, there's a lot of people from Moss Point and Goshay that, that just can't afford to play, and they, this is the only option for their child. But I, I, Jay, I'd like to see something, some benefit to being a resident of Pasca Gula and paying the, the, having the tax burden for this facility, that I get whatever it is, ten dollars less, fifteen dollars less for being a resident than, you know, fifty's too much, maybe ten is right, maybe fifteen is right, something like that.
Like I said, I know it's that balance, you know, I just, sometimes I just feel like there's some appearance that there's a, it creates a hardship. Uh, because like you said, if you're a family of four, you've got two children playing ball.
Yep.
You just added another, you just added a hundred bucks for those kids to play, uh, on top of the revenue fee. And then, like I said, it was kinda unfair, because I know the soccer league, you know, uh, after you left and I took over for partial, I mean, I waived a lot of those fees, we just absorbed it, you know, into, into the soccer club, because I just couldn't, I couldn't look up, I guess I got a weak heart or whatever you wanna say, but when, when these little kids are, you know, five, six years old, they want to play sports, and then the moms and daddies tell me they can't afford for, but for one of them to play, that ain't getting it for me. I just, I, I'll break down and tell you, bring them, 'cause we're playing, you know, they're both playing, you, I'll work it out, you know, we'll take care of it, because it's just the right thing to do for the child.
Back to the non-residents, um, I know whenever that first came out, it was basically cut and dry from what I remember, hey, you don't live basketball, you don't play in the Cowrick and league. Now you're saying that since Goshay doesn't have a Cowrick and league, we do have, we offer them.
You can't, I, I don't know how much, that's the part, um, not have to get with baseball now.
I think we need to be doing that, 'cause I know people personally, it was like, even when Graham Bayou had their kids playing basketball league when that happened, and then, you know, they kinda cut them all from here, and I was pretty tired about it, but.
'Cause I know, I had a conversation with Gentry.
I think we'd advertise that, because.
I do, and I believe I had a conversation with Gentry when he was over with baseball, he's the one that relayed that Cowrick and had basically changed a little bit, that if there's not that team in Goshay, those kids can't come play here. But I think the rules, to your point, the rule's still in effect, Goshay has a team, and Pasca has a team, so, and they're negotiating, the kids really are supposed to stay in Goshay and play.
I bet you.
Just keeps you from beating up all sorts.
Okay, so, I, I guess I think, I would love to see us say, okay, I would love to see us say, okay, go with it. Get, get what you need together, we want, we want, we wanna farm out concessions, we wanna cheat out, get somebody lined up to do all this stuff, make it work. Bring his back, whatever you need, I still approve it and make it work.
Okay.
That's what I would love for us to do, to not, and, and give, give those parents a, a little relief and let everybody move forward. And let's ma, let this thing start making some money.
Well, on the issues we've discussed so far, I have a problem with that, I mean, that's, I, I think that's some way it can happen.
Yeah, I was gonna be contracting out concessions.
Yeah, so.
I think there's a good strategic outline here for me to start reaching out to people to get sense of what we need, what we don't need immediately, and bringing it back to council to, uh, review and consider.
You may wanna pull the, for the beach park concessions.
That's, that's, that makes sense, don't we already have a, a house that vendors that does that concession as well?
Yes.
I'm just hoping that's another, uh, dead proposal to, if they would like to be interested in looking at that, uh.
I agree, my suggestion would also be if somehow we can snag whatever the contract is Gulfport has with their vendor. I'd like to see how they share whatever costs there are with that, maybe there's something we're not seeing or just are not aware of, is it?
They'll get stuff, they'll, they'll also have traders that wanna set up these tournaments that sell apparel, you know, oh yeah, sell bats and, you know, and that kinda stuff, so that also is a permission, permissionable item, which, and say, where's, you can earn permission off of that.
And Steve, you did say that for the field maintenance or the ornaments, that basically goes towards the fee, the paying fee that parents have to pay?
No.
Okay.
No. The director is accustomed to paying for that.
Okay.
Sure, I think that D C is inside of the daily rental.
Did it, he might not, as far as it's set for. No, he, he works in multiple complexes, but Chapel Peeler and Hammond, he pays for the extra, the custodial type work and that, that's extra. That's invisible to the field, and those, those boys, those boys, uh, and, and the same way with field maintenance for the tournament, he pays for that.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
When the rentals come in, we're gonna have a law, we just gonna, who first come, first served, you know, to keep from getting the same people every game, I ain't gonna do that.
About the vendor?
Yeah, vendors, any, any vendor, whether we report them or, he was talking about bozo or.
Right, um, I mean, I think that's a.
I'm just trying to say, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to buy the same people sitting there as long as every game.
What were you sitting there talking about then? Maybe vendor contracts?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's something we can, they can, uh, we can use dates from the tournament, I guess was one of the thoughts that I had, when we know there's gonna be a tournament that comes to town, I mean, I don't, we could talk about it from two different aspects, from league play or tournament play, I don't know which way we wanna do it, but I guess we could work with the vendors in the city that they would submit, you know, a proposal that they'd like to come this day or whichever, and I guess we can approve or disapprove if they can come, would be the only way I know to make it fair, some kinda vetting process.
At first you gotta figure out how many spots you got, right?
Right, true.
Figure out how many spots you got, figure out what your fee is, and then kinda go from there.
Okay. Um, the next item on this list we got here is promotion about developing a plan for out-of-town teams for discounts of restaurants, hotels, et cetera. Um, that may be something that I guess is a little bit in the future, we may not have to decide things tonight, but I, I mean, I think it's a good idea to at least help promote the venue that, you know, and get some good, good publicity being spread. Hey, not only did it have a good time, but a hotel room's a little bit cheaper than it is in Hammond or Shalman or wherever, uh, that it might be. I, I think that's, that would be excellent marketing for us as a city, if we could get some of our vendors to, hey, show me your admission ticket to the, to the tournament, and I'll give you five dollars off, you know, a one entree at the Scrims, something like that.
Good advice, check into the tournament.
Right, 'cause I think that's, uh, that was something that, in discussion with the chamber, that they talked about, they could work with the local vendors here in town, you know, to help try to develop coupon book, uh, a- anything like you're referring to, Stephen, that we've all got in the past when we traveled to different tournaments.
I'm sure whether it's baseball or soccer, we've all seen that at, at these tournaments, and they, that's the first thing that smacked you with is some, some coupon book, some bag of stuff, correct, yeah?
Bozo always have a special weekend.
Yep.
Every weekend.
'Cause I mean, generally, it's always the host hotel, which we all know that, I think that'll be absorbed a lot, if it's from Hampton Inn.
Yeah.
Which is fine, but I think, you know, that, that'll be a good place to be able to, to use that as a different, uh, fundraiser, to give those bags, work with the chamber to hopefully get that, to hopefully get it marketed, unless we wanna just do Pasca Gula. I, I, that would be the only part that I see, the problem, I'm sure the chamber's gonna wanna promote more than just Pasca Gula, 'cause it's accounting point, but I don't know how the city would handle that.
We got Caroline.
Speaking of hotels, I, I, maybe you guys know this, I don't, my experience was always in these out-of-town tournaments, there was always a booking company that you had to go through in order to get your hotel room, and I said, somebody's gotta be making some money off of that. And I don't know if that's something that, I would assume the tournament director arranged.
I never saw that in baseball, I only saw that in soccer.
Really?
It was only in soccer that, to your point, I've always seen that, the booking hotel, I don't know if that's a soccer thing or what, but I, I, we, I've never, it was never told me, 'cause I've asked people about the baseball and travel, and they're like, how are we just all booking as a team to pay that off? We just booking as a team to, 'cause we like to stay at Hampton Inn, 'cause they have a better pool or something.
Because when I've had to check one of my son's teams into a tournament, that was always the second or third question they asked, did you check in using whatever the booking company was? Sure, yeah, of course, you gave them the, the link to the parents, and it was up to the parents whether they wanted to do it or not, but you know what I'm saying, I mean, I, I guess, I don't know if that's something that in the long run, that sounds like a tournament director somewhere is trying to add to his or her cut of this, as opposed to the city trying to create some sort of booking opportunity for hotel stays or whatnot. I mean, is that, I don't know if that comport with your experience, but that was my assumption.
Well, I think it also, uh, the one thing that the tournaments look forward to that I've noticed is when there's, just like we've been in Gulfport before, when there's soccer and baseball going on, it's a nightmare.
Yeah.
And so when they have a big turn, and there's two big tournaments going on like that, there's always that, people will start to reserve hotel rooms, you know, months in advance, and then they will go to a different hotel, but then that hotel couldn't block. I think from that booking hotel, they've been able to reserve the blocks of rooms that they feel that they're gonna need, so it's kinda, they know they're gonna get, the hotels are gonna get their money, 'cause I think that's what the hotel, we, we learned that through soccer as well, that just when we go to state games for radio, there wasn't so many hotels, and everybody would book before you're even team made the tournament. And then the hotel wouldn't sell out like it's needed to be, because somebody would call, oh, our team didn't make it, we don't need those twenty rooms.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Um, and then the last item here is, and it's something that we've been talking about for quite a while, and I know this has been an issue, and again, I don't know what the timeframe is on this, but it, it, it's coming down to the naming rights for the fields. Uh, I don't think anybody's wanting to make this the Mercedes-Benz Sports Flex, but, uh, certainly basketball, that Sports Flex is great, but, you know, do we have a field, do we have a Chevron field, or do we name it Gibson and John Eaglefield like it was when we were growing up? And, and I don't know if that's something that this council can decide, you know, I, I think that sounds like something to get input from guys that have been involved in this for, you know, all their lives, I mean, do we, it's like I posed to the leagues last week, do we, do we, do we name some fields to honor those people that went before us, but may not have a connection to the current generation of all players? Or do we go after the money and, and, uh, get big names to enter into multi-year, uh, sponsorships and, and honor those people in other ways? So, no fear.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to make a proposal, and y'all may shoot me out with it. But I'm going to propose, um, about four gentlemen who worked on these fields from about, and, and several of them may shoot me, I don't wanna walk out the door, um, who worked on these fields for a number of years. They're, you're all going to be shocked when I say your name, so, sorry. Um, put a lot of hard work, a lot of time. They will represent the city very well. They, uh, played on these fields a number of years, they volunteered on these fields a number of years. Uh, they've done a lot of things on these fields about they came on. Um, uh, but I think they will represent the city very well. Um, I would like to see Steve Jordan, Jeffrey Clemens, Scott Tipton, and my husband, Jimmy Comer, be the, the gentleman. And, and actually, I'm gonna throw John Middleton in that mix. I would like to see them be the, the men who go out and solicit the name of these fields, the companies, the, the folks who go out and, and, and decide these things. They could, you guys could, uh, count these hours into, into this. I'd like to see you guys do that, and, and I'm just throwing that out there. I'm happy to put it in the form of a motion, if anybody else would like to interpay that, but.
I think that we as councils, to name it, I think, if this is a new complex, I think you should give new names.
Well, I, I think the name of the complex, but not the fields. I think we need sponsorships.
Well, we can just sponsor, but I.
I don't think we have the time to go out and do that, and I think these guys do it, they play baseball, they put their arms all into it, and I think, I think, I think they will.
We only have seven.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
In that, you're not placing on these four or five individuals to make the decision as to whether it's going to be sponsors or in Gibson Field?
I think you.
'Cause I wanna be the, what, four or five of us being the skate boats for.
Yeah.
Those guys are the guys that I, that's just.
I think you guys sit down and come up with the, the scheme of how things should be, I think you come up with, uh, you know, the three to five years, the X amount of dollars, the.
But all in the premise of the, the fields are gonna be named after whoever buys the rights to it.
And it could be the Chevron Flaming Field, I don't know, how are y'all, y'all, y'all sit, look, y'all came up with four binders of things. Y'all came up with four binders of things. I, and you can, you can say that, I really wish you wouldn't, but y'all been in a lot of time, y'all sat around a lot of tables, and I just think.
Hey, if that's. I do think, if that's a motion, I'll second it, but with this caveat, I, I, I think, I, my suggestion is that you have kind of a softball person too. I mean, those are all baseball people, and so I would just say add a softball person.
And I don't know who the softball person would be, um, because I don't.
James Prossock, his wife was very active, the intervention was very active.
James Prossock would be definitely.
Make five or six catches every.
Is there a ton of good baseball softball?
Real quick, real quick, I can say one thing, I, I think it's a great idea to have a group together to do that, but I really think the council needs to decide, are you naming it after people, or are you naming it after sponsors?
Sponsors.
So then that, that, so that's the direction.
Sponsors and maybe a slash person, I mean, you know, like, um, like a hyphenated name, like.
That, 'cause there's.
There's so many people that pour their lives into those fields, I just don't.
I think you, I think you.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna throw something else out, real quick, and you'll probably get it back in the seat. Um. You wanna name the fields, I'd like to name the championship field after Turf Masters and Steve Jordan, because Steve Jordan donated two hundred thousand dollars worth of turf.
No.
Thought you did.
That never, never happened.
Oh, I thought you did.
Well, y'all get a credit later, yeah.
When we walked out of here, let me clarify this, when we walked out of here, uh, from Bit Open, I was told I was gonna have the irrigation of the fields, irrigation of common area, building of the infield, and the sodding of the out, of the common area and the fields. And as it turned out, uh, with nothing but the irrigation and the sodding, everything else was. So I, I relayed that to Brandon Mitchell, who I originally offered to, and I still, I talked a little bit with Michael, maybe we can buy the tarp, maybe we can do something else, but I still want to do that, but the, the extent of the was based on us making that money, and then putting some with it, and so when it was stripped to about a third of what the original proposal was, then I made a call on Brandon Mitchell, and said, and told a previous city manager, I said, if, if that's stripped, then, you know, I'm not making the money to give back to you that, that I wanna do. And I, I get it.
Okay.
Yeah, we were told that, so, sorry, apologize.
So just to kinda finish what I was saying, well, you got these columns like we've been talking about, and I think that's a great place for the names. So, I'm a capitalist, I believe you need to go make your money off selling sponsorships or.
I agree.
I agree with that.
But I don't think, I don't know, and it may be something that committees might have to come up with, but seven fields, you're gonna have a hard time getting people, seven people to do twenty-five thousand, so we're gonna have to, you know, some of the bigger industries may step up and actually, so there needs to be a plan about whether, okay, if you do fifty thousand, you get it for a ten year, or, you know, if you're only gonna do five thousand, you get it for two years, or something along those lines, 'cause I don't think you're gonna have everybody that's gonna step up and play with the same amount.
I'm gonna throw somebody else under the bus on that, and the person you need to talk to, 'cause he can give you a good, honest figure as to what, 'cause he knows the heartbeat of it, what companies will pay, you need to bring Alan Sutton in. He will be able to tell you, he can, you know, in a, in a way of not telling you what Chevron can do, and then you can gauge what others will be able to do off of what Alan says. And I agree, you're not gonna be able to get seven companies to get twenty-five thousand.
But I mean, I know like Laurel, they did theirs, and they were, were able to get, I think they only had four or five fields, and I think they did theirs for twenty-five thousand for five years or something, and they had some people step up and do it, but I know it's different in different places, so it's something, whatever committee we put.
And you can structure it, you know, you can structure it to where you can do that, they pay five thousand dollars a year, they don't have to pay the whole twenty-five thousand.
Correct, yeah.
There's ways to make it work for, for different industry businesses.
It's kinda easier for them.
But I would pull, I would say in those conversations, he would be able to.
I think that's a good suggestion.
To help you out.
Okay, so who, who's, who are the names that they need to add into our mission?
We've got Steve George, Jeffrey Clemens, Scott Tip, and John Reynolds, Jimmy Comer, and we'll do the softball.
Well, I, I don't know, I mean, it probably need to be spoken to, I mean, to me, I don't think we're gonna get this done in the first year.
No, you're not.
I mean, to me, I think we got a little time maybe to.
You got a year, 'cause we're gonna name them one, two, three, four, five, six, seven this year.
Right.
I think, I think that needs to be done possibly this year, and that, that, this is the complex, which is the council's decision, 'cause it's not gonna be, we're not gonna name it Chevron Sports Complex, we're not doing that. Chevron Sports Complex, we're not doing that, I mean, it's going to be something that, whether it's Pasca Gula Black Ship, Pasca Black Ship Sports Flex, or Pasca Sports Complex, whatever, maybe Black Ship Park, whatever we decide to make it, I, it just, that's the council and the city's decision, I don't think that's a, that's not going to be a, a sponsor. And the only thing that I will talk about Stephen, that from the previous fields, in, you know, just in my opinion, I feel like the wall that I know Jennifer was, Jennifer really clarified last week with the engineers, all of them need to be on that wall. There is no question, there is no doubt in my mind, that all of those people need to be there, and there's several other people that have worked on those fields as well, that are no longer with us, that need to be on the wall that baseball and softball can give us, such as the Eric Hartmans and the Bo Coles of the world and so forth. So all those people need to be on the wall, and I think that can be done. I think as well, Jennifer brought up last week about bricks, I know this was one of Jimmy's ideas back in soar, to help try and raise money for the things. Is to turn around and if people want to do a more memorial, we have like that area that we've talked about that could be done in a brick, in some point or fashion that gets done, name or name or whatever, but it's something that can be done, even if it's somebody that wants to spend money. And then of course, go out and give the businesses, the only thing that I would keep, I don't want to basically keep a family, I don't know the people from the Flankman family, if they're even still around. But I would hate for them to turn around and be willing to give us twenty-five thousand dollars and we won't name a field Flankman again. So I mean, I'm sure, you know, I, I know we may not be a good business, but a family, you know, a, a prominent family in town, you know, has money to take, I don't want to keep them, I, I disagree with Jason, but I don't want to keep a family for giving us money.
No, 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 I don't want anybody to give us money, that's.
I mean, like, I just don't want to keep it just to, I don't want to keep the families out, because if, if J.C. May's family decides to come up with, you know, money and they want a J.C. May field again, I'm not, whatever the fee is that's set by the, um, I'm, I'm a little.
Okay, well, let me finish my motion, so, let me, let me put those things and, and then the softball names to be added.
Okay, to be determined.
Yes, and then you guys come up with whatever you need to do and, and you have your timeframe, but I just would like to give that, you know, yeah, and, and then, yes, the council name the complex.
Sure, with finding a recommendation of the council on future field naming opportunities, something like that. Do you want to go ahead and say the name of the complex is Basketball Sports Complex?
It's all in that motion?
We made it into two motions, but that's, that's fine with me.
All right.
Is there a second, I already said that that motion is in further discussion?
All was in favor, six of them are saying aye.
Would you like to go ahead and establish the name? Okay. Okay, uh, we've covered a lot of ground tonight, has anybody? Okay.
Well, I'm a hundred percent so on Sports Flex or Complex, I mean, when I think of a Sports Flex, I think of football, soccer, you know, baseball, softball and stuff, so I mean, to me, that we probably need to think about that a little bit instead of just like the name.
We got a little.
Well, you got just, just one sport, that's a complex, still a sport.
What? Basketball Complex, sounds good.
I thought you said basketball complex.
Yeah, you did, that's what I said, I have a problem with Sports Flex, because when you normally talk about Sports Flex, you talk about football, soccer, there's more than just baseball and softball in a Sports Flex.
Yeah, but if you talk about football, that's still a sport.
Right.
Bitch, a hundred percent, still a sport.
Right, but the sports part, I don't have a problem with it, it's the flex part, I have a problem.
You can call it baseball, you can call it softball.
What about, what about basketball's more complexes?
Well, Stephen, I guess my question is, we don't have time because the engineers need to be able to know what to put on that sign.
No, they're going to put that, they're going to set that sign down.
Well, they're going to set it, but I mean, we need to put something in the name.
No, he can set it down in there.
It's not, it's on one side, they can come back and add the latter player.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess I just didn't know if we wanted to open a complex on March fourteenth.
I, I, I didn't, I was not aware we had to make a decision sometime in, in the very short term, but I kind of felt like it was sort of gravitating towards Basketball Sports Complex, but if there's, if there's a temperature to, to the contrary, then so be that.
Now, being indicated that it will only take him a few days to get the letters ready, and you can just, you can go ahead and set everything in place, assign the letters, you can call it whatever you want to call it. You have that really good question.
Okay, so, I guess that's an issue we can stew on for another, another week or so, but any event, unless there's a motion. Uh, here and nothing else, unless someone else has anything else they want to add, it's nearing eight o'clock.
I do, I have one other thing, um, direction as far as, uh, wherever, uh, parking recs director, how would you go on that?
At, at this point, my top priority has been the HR director position getting filled. I would like to have the chance to individually pertaining to that position, uh, prior to, to moving forward with it. So I do have a few things that I would like to run by you before we move forward.
I think though, my observation would be though, that, and concern, presumably all I have is who with the city is going to be responsible the moment that, uh, the engineering company literally hands us, and contractor hands us the keys and says, it's yours now. Who, who is going to be responsible in the city for that, whether it's a new rec director, whether it's somebody from the department partners, whether it's Josh or, you know, whomever. I, I guess that's, that's what we need to hear from you. Yeah. Okay, Jeff, you have something else you want to say?
Yeah, I agree. Capacity as field name.
I don't like it.
Well, the point is, area capacity, uh.
The town hall is.
But when we did go to come up with a plan at first, people, the, uh, point that the league made that I was, I think is really important, the ability for them as a league to sell sponsorships for placards or signs or, you know, how are they going to do it? I mean, is that something we want to?
I think we need to discuss it, because I think if we come to them and they sell twenty hundred dollar signs and we tell them we're going to give them three thousand dollars, the twenty-five thousand dollars a year, or something along those lines, but yeah.
Yeah, agreed, they get the cut of the other ones, then, yeah, they just, but, and it's easy to do it, other than tent signs too, you know, with like out at, uh, NCC and I'm seeing in other parks, where they, they do a big board, and you just have a two hour, you know, one and a half, a two placard, with the logo and it's all in one spot, and, you know, to my.
Yeah, I want to, I want to share a lot of stuff all over the place.
If you, if you put a board up, it's there all year for all intents and purposes.
Sure, and, and it's easy to change out, but.
I, I don't, I don't know, that, that's something for you guys to talk about, I don't know if that's the direction you want to go, but, but I'd be loved to hear what y'all have to say about that.
I'll work on it. You got it.
Okay, that's why I said.
Well, it may be good for, to add the sponsorship committee or however we do it, after the flex, after the Sports Flex is completed, we may be able to identify areas that we could do something in a more professional manner to, your boy Stephen, to turn around and, once they know what they got to work with. You know, if it may not be putting it on the back of the dugout, but maybe there's, in one of the common areas that we have, these grassy areas that we, that feel a work, clean, a cleaner, fresher look, you know, to go along with, you know, like we've all said, our twelve million dollar portfolio.
You could sell law laws that say Compton Engineering.
Well, what is a goodie bag? There you go.
Is there anything further from anyone else on the council, a motion to adjourn until February four, two thousand twenty? Any discussion, all was in favor, six of them are saying aye.